He crossed another line of civil liability. He put the town of Lisbon at risk for potential lawsuit. So chew that up and spit it out and digest it. He put the town of Lisbon at risk for potential lawsuit. I'm not going to ask Mr. Cody to respond to anything here. Because he's already in enough trouble. The school committee member and Mr. Cody have crossed big time the line on civil liability. You can figure it out. What have they caused me? And what have they caused the officers whom they've identified in their statements? Well, I will tell you this, wrong group. Not only is my attorney reviewing all of this, but the Teamsters Union Attorney is reviewing it. Because I did notify the officer from that unit who they alleged was involved in this. And I will be at the conclusion of this meeting advising the officer from the main association of police who they alleged the same. And I have the letters, the investigation, et cetera, et cetera, from the Attorney General, which basically says it was a bunch of crap, had no bearing. They lied, and they lied, and they lied. So to the Lisbon Town Council, I say this. Actually, I'm making a request. The recent charter amendments that were approved allows you to police your own. I request that you remove Mr. Cody from office. Guilty, guilty, and guilty on the tapes. Drugs, fraud, tapes. If this was criminal, this is guilty, guilty, guilty. It's not criminal, it's civil. What's nice about civil? It's only the preponderance of the evidence. It doesn't carry the amount of evidence as a criminal trial does. In a civil proceeding, it's only the preponderance of the ASCO Jase Simpson. If you choose not to remove him from office, I request that you suspend him from taking part in any discussion, voting, or any matters whatsoever to do with the Police Department. At any time, whenever this board is in session and you have to make decisions regarding the Police Department. He's not fit for office. I think you've seen that in what's here. It's definitely right in here. The town of Lisbon and the citizens of Lisbon deserve better. And you have to make a decision. Sorry to put you in that spot. But that's the spot you're in. Thank you.
My name is Erlene Millitt. I have lived in this town for many years. My children were raised, born, and attended schools here, graduated, become good citizens, and they live here now. I have never been so appalled in my life. I have known David Brooks since he came on the Police Department. My husband was on at that time. And David is an honest citizen, and he's been this way all the time I have known him. And for our people in our school, or people that are on our elected officials for our town, this is the first time I've attended a meeting since the town has gone charter. And I have never in all my life been at anything. And I am ashamed tonight to say that I live in a town where this goes on. I voted for Charlie Smith because I've known him since a child, and he is a good, honest, loyal citizen. And I just stand here and wonder what has happened to our town and why we have people that come into office and do such horrible things. To me, this is a crime.
Yes, sir.
My name is Bruce Coffin. I'd like to say something. My name is Bruce Coffin. I live on Dumas Street in Lisbon. I've been watching Mr. Cody through this whole thing, smiling and grinning. What's so funny?
Just continue, I'll have my space afterwards.
You know, you have a big smirk on your face like it's some kind of joke. If you really, if you don't like this town, you want to spread all kinds of things about it, maybe you should resign.
May I comment on that point? This fall, when the elections came about to run for council, I had no intentions of running for council. But I was pushed and prodded to run for council. The only one thing that I did was I made an interview to all the local newspapers, speaking out against the Lisbon Police Department. And I felt that it was way too large when we have towns like Standish that's only got a sheriff's department, and they've got more people than the Lisbon has. I just feel that we're paying a little too much money. Obviously, the people of this community felt the same way I did. Because there was over 2,000, in fact, there was almost 2,400 people that voted to put me in office and to remove a person that had been in there for 15 years. So in saying that, there's a lot of people, a lot more than what's in this room, that feels of the same things that I've said. We've seen actions, we've seen things. And I will be getting into a lot more of these in the future. Most of this, in fact, all of this stuff was done way before I was ever elected. Not after I was a councillor. And whatever, I think, you know, very good performance tonight, David. Very nice. I would be, you know, Hollywood bound. Hey, hey, sit down, hey. Keep your, you'll get your chance to speak. You'll get your chance to speak. I feel that I represent a lot more than just 30 or 40 people. They deceive. And they have clearly told me the exact same things that I've said. And that's why I'm going to continue. And I knew something like this was going to be coming up because of the, when you start messing with budgets, and obviously, I'm going to vote now being on the council, I knew that there'd be an attack to try to get me out before the vote came. And I expected it. And I think you've done a good job. And move on. If you don't want me here, I'll leave. I'd really, it matters not. It's just that I was put on here by 2,400 citizens of this community. Hi. I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. I've said enough.
Hi, my name is Melinda Baker, and I live over on Summer Street. We've been in town for quite a few years. I have never been to a town meeting. I voted for the charter. And I am embarrassed at Mr. Cody's conduct, representing me in my town in a slanderous way and in a disrespectful way to say things that are not true, to talk to reporters and have blasphemies against a decent man in a good town and a safe place to live. And if you're, if you guys don't do something about him being on this board, then I'm going to go vote against this council charter because you are not doing service. Whether or not 2,400 people voted for you or not, they didn't vote for a liar and a slanderer. Now, if you have your personal opinions, keep them to yourself. Keep them out of the newspapers. Stop defaming our character of our chief of police and our town. I'm very disappointed, and I would love to see some action tonight on his position here. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, could I just add something quickly? Of those 2,400 people, there's people in this room tonight who voted for a part of that 2,400 that I'm sure voted for Mr. Cody. However, I have to ask of those 2,400 people, if they had known all of this was being said and done, where those votes would have gone?
Ma'am, did you have a question? I'll get to you, sir.
Thank you. My name is Lisa Ward. I live on Maple Street in Lisbon Falls. And I think I agree with Ms. Baker that most of us feel disappointed, not just in Mr. Cody. I think that 2,400 people are going to be disappointed when they hear about the, all of what we've heard about today. I think most of us are stunned. And what it comes down to, Mr. Cody, is whether you're going to do the right thing. Because right now, I don't see that you feel any remorse for the awful things that you've done. And I don't know how you can live with yourself. And I'm not asking you that question. I saw the same thing that Mr. Coffin saw. I saw you smirking and grinning and feeling no remorse and self-satisfied. And I think you should be ashamed of yourself. You've acted like a gossipy little girl. And it's true, and it's horrible. And you should, you should think about what you've done. Because you didn't hurt just Chief Brooks, and you didn't hurt just the town council, and you didn't hurt just yourself. You hurt everybody who lives in this town. Everybody who enjoys living here, everybody who lives here by choice, and everybody who makes a decent living and chooses to be a member of this society in this, in this town of ours. I'm ashamed of you. I think everybody else here is too. And I think most of the people who I know in this community, when they find out what we heard tonight, are going to be ashamed of you too. I don't think we should rely on the council alone to do the right thing. I think that you should do the right thing. And you should remove yourself from this council. Thank you.
Then Richard, and then Conrad. Nope, no, Kathleen. Kathleen, Richard, and then Conrad.
My name is Kathleen Bailey. I am a town resident. I'm also an employee. Mr. Cody, I have to tell you, I consider myself a very good Christian woman. And you can ask Mr. Eldridge. I fought with this and fought with this when the reporter first started coming out. I give 110% to my job, and I also am proud of the town that I live in. This is my second tour here with the town. And I became very, very upset, and I was fighting with God because I didn't know how to handle it. I also had an incident where one of the grandchildren that I was raising had fallen through a glass window, and the Lisbon PD responded just like that and had her ready to go for me to escort him to the hospital. He took 24 stitches. I tried to go into the Lisbon Reporter to have you all change a little bit and be a positive Lisbon reporter, to show something positive instead of all the negativity that was dragging down the employees, the townspeople. It was very confusing for everybody. I mean, we knew that some of the things that were written in there were not facts. It would have been fine if they were facts, but they weren't. I personally felt that you were here on a personal vendetta, not as a councilperson to help the town of Lisbon. And I have to tell you that as much as I have prayed and brained for you and Mr. Comber, I feel that you are not the right person for this job. And I do believe what I emailed you, Mr. Eldridge, that God will take revenge. And I think he has. Thank you.
Mr. Brooks knows about a call I made to the Lisbon Police Department this last summer after a school board member made accusations against a local businessperson in the community of stealing thousands and tens of thousands of dollars from the school, something in the school system, and using it for their own purposes. I, my wife said to me after my conversation of well over half an hour with the, one of the two editors of the Lisbon Reporter, that she had never seen me so upset in her entire life of 41 years of living with me. In your window, baseless accusations, and statements for, out of anger, really don't have any place in the public arena. And I feel that I, I am of the belief that some sort of action needs to occur by this council, whether it's tonight, or you take the information and study it and set a special meeting, a special council meeting to hear the discussion. But I would encourage you to take some action of some sort, either applauding, no action, or whatever action there is deemed appropriate within the charter form of government which we have. Mr. Brooks has always been, in my dealings with him, above board. And I, I personally felt almost grief for him tonight, having to come out publicly and address these accusations publicly and the emotions that were going on and have been going on over several holiday seasons because of baseless accusations. I would encourage you to take some consideration and action, even beginning tonight, whatever it is. Thank you.
Mr. Davis.
I don't think I need to talk long, but I'll go up because that's what the protocol is supposed to be. I don't typically get up to something like this very often. And those of you who come to these meetings all the time know that I'm not here very often. And I guess I'm, the way I'm going to speak is going to be something very personal. And I'm not quite sure where to begin. I know as I look around the room, there's many more people here that I do know than I don't know. And that would probably be first names as well as last names. And probably, I'm sure the majority of you know who I am. And I'm sure it's no secret that I've lived in this town all my life, as many of you are, have. And it's no secret that I've known many people up there sitting in those seats over there. And it's no secret that I know Mrs. Brooks. And I know David Brooks. I went to school with Roger Cody. We did, didn't we?
We tried.
I thought we did. I know many of the members of the PD, many of the people that work for the town. I have paid, as we all have, a huge amount of taxes of our hard-earned money. Now, there's probably people that work harder than I do, but there ain't many. And anybody who thinks that it just falls from the sky because we make the big bucks, guess again. Because some ways, deep down in your heart, in some ways, in your mind, you know where it comes from, it comes from work. I'm not up here because I know him. I'm here because I pay a big bunch of taxes. I know members who are on this, the other group that's been referred to. The issue of Mr. Cody, the board, according to this agenda here, item 6C was Police Department review. I had no idea that this was going to happen. I gotta tell you, I, I don't know what you folks are going to do, but this needs to be addressed. There's obviously some pretty high emotions. I mean, look at this guy. And he was standing up there, and he's the big chief. He's the big guy. Yeah, yeah, he's got, he's got emotions too. Yeah, and just because these guys are police officers doesn't mean they don't have emotions either. Look at his wife. It's pretty sad. The one point I do want to make, I'm making, on my issue, and I say again, it's not Roger Cody. It's not these people here. It's not the political arena. It's not this, the Citizens Group or whatever. I don't belong to any of it. There's a reason why I'm not up there. God knows, many people have wanted me to. I've served this town in many other ways. That ain't one of them. And Roger, to be honest with you, these people would be up there and telling you this stuff. I would be somewheres in a crack in the floor. I don't know how you can stand up there and, for that, I'm going to commend you. But there's an issue here. And I think everybody needs to put their emotions aside right now. And this is a business issue that needs to be taken care of, and it should be addressed as a business. I mean, I, I mean, I've got nothing against the guy. I've got, there's not, nobody in this room I've got anything against. I have no agenda. I have none. And if people had an agenda, and the agenda was with him, it should have been taken out between him and perhaps his boss. Not in a way of, the way they were doing in this, in this paper and stuff. Okay? Being friends with him, am I aware of the Lisbon Reporter? Yep. Three times I've read it. Three times. And I sit in an office, and I'll bet I probably put more hours in an office than the majority of you do. So I've got all kinds of times sitting at the computer. I'll tell you one thing, I don't have time to read that. And of the three times I read it, I pressed that big old button called Delete and Escape. And there's only one thing I will address as far as that goes. Think it was around Thanksgiving was one of the times I had read it. Because the last time I read it was today. And they talked about the Obeshaun, the big opening in Obeshaun, and I say kudos. Because that's where I'm going with this indirectly, with Obeshaun. I'm going with business. And Thanksgiving, when I read it, it was only the second time I'd read it. And I'm just scrolling down real quick, and it said something about turkeys. Duh. I'm thinking Thanksgiving. I'm thinking somebody, this is me. I'm not the shopper stool and shad, but I've done something right. I'm thinking somebody's giving away frozen turkeys amongst the town to the employees until I read it. And I have to tell you, folks, if nobody's read it, read it. Whoever put it in, it is pretty shameful. I gotta tell you.
He signed it. Todd Comber.
I don't even know Todd Comber. I think I know his wife. So I think I dated his sister 40 years ago, or... Give or take a couple. Only because I know the maiden name, I think. I don't know Todd, I just, I shake his hand, he's a fine guy, I guess. But something about, the issue, the idea of putting something like that and saying turkeys were, I don't know, I don't remember. Running around and two bad seasons over or something like that, and referring, was referring to town employees, I guess, in front of the town hall. Now I get to the last point where I mention something about Obeshaun. Okay? I'm a businessman. I've been a businessman, and there've been times I struggle. Yep, I struggle. In this economic time, I struggle. Kudos to Mr. Obeshaun, for the big eye, to put that kind of investment into the town of Lisbon and Mobano and the new Floris and Drappo's and whoever else is paying taxes. Big taxes. Remember, the businesses don't put a whole lot of strain on the infrastructure. Businesses that don't have kids in school cost them eight bucks. You might have the PD swinging outplays, check the doors. Thank you for doing that. Not quite so sure. I thank him for waking me up and reminding me that doors are locked. But they were doing a job. Going to give you this one last thing, and think of this, think of this scenario. A potential businessperson with bucks, bucks, greenbacks. Because that's what it takes, it's all about. Evidently, because that's what everybody's complaining about, the amount of money you guys are spending. And is this some waste? I'm sure there is. Because I'm finding waste in my own place, and I'm cleaning it up. Now you guys have a job to do, school department has a job to do, clean it up. You got waste, fact of the matter is, you know what? You don't have the money. The money's not there. Clean it up. So you guys do your job, and your department heads, do your job. But to take it to this extreme publicly. And now I'm confused, like, because for what I've read, and now for what I've seen here, I think this is the fact. I really do. So here's a potential businessman wants to move in. And he Googles up Lisbon. God help him, if the Lisbon Reporter, Todd Comber, comes up. Think it over. This is not a joke. If this, this is, this is nothing about emotions here. I'm talking, I'm a businessman. Somebody's got some bucks, a potential developer wants to come in, Googles it up, town of Lisbon. Great location. It is a great town. Look at the people. If it's not a great town, you guys wouldn't be here. Were you a great town, I wouldn't be here. Somebody Googles it up and reads this. What do you think the chances that he's going to go to the next phase and call somebody in town? Think it over. If I had enough guts, you know what? I'd ask for a raise of hands, how many of you here in this room think if they read that, what's in that? And watching this on, and I've got satellites, so I'm not going to be able to see this. And this airs in a couple days.
Thursday night.
Thursday. And somebody from out of town is watching this. We need to hang our heads. Some apologies need to be said. Some apologies need to be said. Some apologies need to be said. And I think we need to kinda like, get this behind us and move forward altogether. Oh, well, yeah, I've already covered that. But here it is. Here it is. You know, this is, this is pretty sad. The success of all this effort depends on your support this voting season. Take aim with a steady hand, give it your best shot. And only aim at what you want to shoot. I wasn't impressed. Three times I've looked at the Lisbon Reporter, only three. And maybe I'm gonna have to look tomorrow to see if my name's in it. And I'm gonna tell you, if my name's in it, and your slander like this stuff has been done, I'm not gonna be at this podium. It needs to start. We're all together. This is a town. You know, I've got a son who's graduated from college in a couple, in a couple months from now, who's gonna probably be the second generation of my company. Now, when he was born, I had no idea. Up to just a few years ago, I had no idea. Am I proud of that? Yeah. Is he gonna stay here? Yeah. Okay, I want him to have some success and not have to deal with this. I toyed with bringing him here. I was afraid something like this would happen. I kept him home. Although this would've been a good experience for him. Think it over, folks, okay? Lisbon Reporter is all gray, the concept is gray. You know, what wrong has been done, let's write it and move ahead for the town. That's my thing.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Randy Jones. Lived in this town for fifty-nine years, because that's the whole land. You've never seen me at a podium before, ever. Nobody in this room has, probably never will again. And if I didn't feel fairly strongly about what I'm about to say, I wouldn't be in front of the podium now. Yes, I'm a friend of David Brooks and Lynn and their family. Watched the kids grow up in my neighborhood. And without going too deep into depth on this, I too am appalled by what I've seen here tonight. I just go on record as saying, in my fifty-nine years in this town, I don't think we've ever, ever had a finer police chief or a better department protecting us, and that's why we're enjoying the low crime rate that we have. And I'm all for keeping it that way. And once again, thank you very much, David.
Yes, Larry.
Thank you for mentioning Obeshaun Hardware, Mr. Davis. Many of you... My name's Larry McClure. He took your hand enough times. Davis Landscaping, is that what, is that what you... Dave and I have been friends for, boy, a long time, a long time. And Randy Jones is related to me, we live on the same street. You make me sick. I had to say that. Now I'm all sick. Because I've known you for thirty-eight years. This is ridiculous. Really ridiculous. I just handed the keys over to a young man that's my nephew. Twenty-eight years I ran this store. He's as proud of being in this town, he listened to him, but he's as proud to be here as I am. I'd like to get out of here. This is disgusting. I travel this state, I go to every one of my stores, I go into every town, and I'm always mentioning Chief Brooks. Chief Brooks. And there's not a single person that knows him that's ever said anything negative about this man. To see this, I am totally disgusted. And I'm a taxpayer for a long time, three sons, put 'em through college. You helped me do this. You all did. I own this town everything. They all thank you. I'm not friends...
Michael, can I go first? Sorry, I get asked. Um, I appreciate all the comments tonight. And as you've all known that I have been more than a huge brunt of the Lisbon Reporter. And I can honestly say, with all of them being untrue also. And while we're sitting here, I decided to pull up what it takes to remove somebody from office. Because I personally am recommending that he be removed from office. And if I had my druthers, we'd also be removing Ms. Comer from office too. But something tells me I have no right to put that request in. It does require that the council vote to remove somebody from office. It does require that we give him notice to do that, and it does require that he is allowed a public hearing. I'd like to say tonight that you're all sitting here, and this should be constituted as a public hearing, but it is not, because we would have to announce it and allow him to do that. But I would like to personally recommend that we ask, that Mr. Cody be removed from office pending a public hearing.
Good.
Can you remove himself?
Yes, he can. Yes, he can.
Just a couple things. I'm gonna read again a couple of excerpts from the Lisbon Reporter. Well, I've already read. Why we started the Lisbon Reporter, we wanted to stop and reflect back on why we originally started the Lisbon Reporter. We have had grave concerns for quite some time now about the way the business has been conducted at the town and the Lisbon Municipal officials. Therefore, we needed an avenue of which to inform the citizens of what is actually going on when your backs are turned. We have dedicated hours and hours of our time collecting data relevant to our cause. And again, I'm highlighting "our" cause. We want to share it with the community so you can come to your own conclusions. Well, Lisbon community, please do come to your own conclusions as to what you've heard here tonight. And ask yourself what's right and what's wrong. The second thing I wanna read, again, from the Lisbon Reporter. And I tread lightly on some of this stuff, because my wife hasn't heard a lot of it.
I have never read it, because he actually told me that I should never read it.
From the Reporter, August twenty-fifth, two thousand eight. Friends, fellow citizens and taxpayers beware. The town of Lisbon is no longer a democratic government. We are fast becoming a fascist government. A totalitarian regime with Chief of Police David Brooks as dictator. Just read the proposed changes to the Town of Lisbon Town Charter. It will scare you. And I didn't have any part in writing any of the changes in the Lisbon Town Charter. Did I have any part in writing any changes in the Lisbon Town Charter? No. Thank you. We have a, without question, a radical, anti-government activist group here. We know who one of their leaders is. We've made a request of the council to relieve of that, relieve us of that problem. And there's probably some more things coming at a later date. But anyway, thank you all that spoke. I appreciate it very much. It has been a very difficult, very difficult, very emotional time period for myself, for my wife. At times to the point where my wife was afraid to live in her own home. As the Joneses know, as Mr. Fellows knows, it's a damn shame when you're afraid to live in your own home. They caused it. That's right, they caused it. You caused it.
I caused the...
I'm done, Mr. Ford.
My name is Don Stone. I've lived here for sixty-six years. When you gonna resign?
Probably next meeting I'll be told to resign. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Mr. Chairman, can I speak? One thing I'd like to make very clear, that probably a lot of you people don't know. Number one, I'm amazed at the amount of attention that's been brought to a blog site. We were approached about some of the things that we had written, or somebody had written in there one time. And the person went to the FBI with it. And the FBI clearly told us that anything that is in that is nothing but a blog site and it's people's opinions. I have not, nor have I ever, had the ability to post a thing on the Lisbon Reporter. I do not have any financial interest in the Lisbon Reporter. The only thing that I did, as I associated with the Lisbon Concerned Citizen, and if you need proof of that, I can give you proof of that. That's the only thing that I can tell you.
Yes, sir.
I was directly told that you were the editora, editor, and you determined what went into the paper, period. That's what I was told that morning that got me so upset. That's what I was told. You determined what went on in that paper.
The, I was part of the group that, that went over the information. Yes, I was.
Mr. Chair. May it be noted that there was only one person who stated that he determined what went into the paper.
Mr. Cody, you've already proven you have no credibility. The Attorney General Investigative Report makes it very clear.
I'm not gonna argue with you, sir.
I'm making a point, statement of fact. You have no credibility.
No.
You could tell us right now, it's dark out, but all of us would look out the window to verify that fact, because nobody's gonna believe you.
And I probably won't be voting on your budget like you didn't want me to.
Oh, there's nothing to do.
This is gonna go back and forth.
Do it now, and you won't drag the town and everybody else to another meeting, another hearing. You don't get any of this nonsense. Do the right thing and resign.
Any additional comments? I figure we kinda moved right through audience participation now, so.
Next to Town Managers Report, can we get that?
I don't have much to say, except that we've been working hard on the budget, trying to close a nine-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar revenue shortage. Hopefully, when we present the budget, we'll have met that commitment. If you can go to lisbonname.gov/office3.com, you'll see our new website that they've been working on. It's quite nice. You should see it. They've done a great job. And also, I gave you a rough schedule on the ordinance review I just received this week. Shoreline zoning corrections that they're bringing to us, to me, to comprehensive plan. So it's gonna be a long process. One I received tonight was twelve pages long. That's just one, with lots of changes. So it'll be great reading. The first part step is gonna be, it goes to the planning board, and then it comes before the public and you. So we'll be looking at those for quite a while. That's all I have.
Thank you, Steve. I guess I just would like to say that it's, at this time, I don't think the council can act on anything tonight based on what Councilor Wells has found in the information. It does require some public hearings and some additional meetings in order to take any direct action. We will keep the public informed of whatever we would do to go forward. Yes, sir.
Charles Baker lives on Summer Street, and I don't know what the laws are pertaining to this, but it seems like one point of order that could be taken by this council is there could be a suspension. The suspension does not have to indicate that an individual is guilty of doing something that's wrong or not, but it can give a grace period. So the council can consider that. Now, I guess you're getting ready to dismiss the...
We still have a few things to do, but...
So I just wanted to say that.
That also, if I can, I mean, one of the things that we'd appreciate as a council, some of us are fairly new, is, unfortunately, tonight, we are missing some of our members. And it would be nice, actually, to actually get together as a complete council and discuss before, to me moving forward, just to make sure that the people that aren't here actually have a fair, fair opinion and process.
Based on our rules, which we wrote and were approved, resoundingly by this town had our last vote, we can suspend him and then move forward with a public hearing to remove him. So we can choose to suspend him as of this time if we wish.
I would like to think that we could actually have a group with or other council members to make sure that's complete. That's what I would feel better with, besides moving tonight, but...
I disagree, but...
That's fine.
Your opinion, Gina?
I think that it would be proper that the full council be here. But I do think that we should do it as quickly as possible. I don't know if we can have an emergency meeting. If we can, I think it should happen as soon as possible. The other two members should be contacted, and they should be asked to come in. And then I think we should set some sort of public forum, excuse me, so that the twenty-four hundred people that voted for Mr. Cody have their opinion out there also, and take it from there.
Do you have a quorum?
Yes, we do.
We do have a quorum.
Thank you.
How quickly can we move on this, if we call an emergency meeting?
Twenty-four. You couldn't have one...
Have a meeting Wednesday or Thursday?
Or suspension. You cannot, you have one week in advance. So for removal from office, we have to give one week public notice. For suspension, we could choose to do that.
Tonight?
Tonight. Tomorrow night. Whatever it takes to get a council together.
What I would like to see is either Steve or the chair actually work to see about getting the council together as a group, a whole group. And then we can actually move forward from there.
I'll get a meeting scheduled, an emergency meeting, and notify everybody. We've got one very sick counselor, so I hope he recovers quickly. He's been sick for quite a while. And I don't know what happened to the other, but I'll contact everybody tomorrow and get a date that works for this week.
I have one slight issue with that, and that's our executive sessions.
For tonight?
Yes, because one of them does concern the police contract, if I remember.
Yes, it does.
I have an issue with that. Roger, you could solve part of that problem by choosing not to attend that this evening.
I will not do that.
And I will recommend that we table that item tonight.
Okay. I mean, I mean, based on what I've heard and I think what the chief has said, I'm willing to go forward with a suspension to get a public hearing set. And go forward with that, to let everybody air their concerns and let people defend what they think they need to defend, and then we can make a final decision.
How about this suggestion?
I'm concerned that we'll not get the counselors together just based on illness and schedules.
How about this? We complete the two appointments, and we suspend the rest of the agenda. I agree with that.
Then actually get the council together for a meeting.
Correct.
I would hopefully that we could get the whole council together, I mean, hopefully it's illness and, that would be my hope.
So let's move forward with the appointments.
We only have one appointment, and that's for the advisory board. And one of the members who had put his name in is not here, and that's Mr. Comber. And the other gentleman is here, Mr. Mainz. All were notified that we would do interviews tonight, so I don't know where Mr. Comber is, but.
Mr. Mainz, having served on the board before, I'd like to make a recommendation that we appoint him to the Budget Advisory Board.
I agree with that recommendation, seeing as he's showed up twice and the other person has not, and he does have wonderful credentials.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilor Wells and a second from Councilor Mason.
Yes.
All those in favor? Congratulations, Richard.
Order passed five zero.
Next appointment?
Okay, you're still in.
Next item?
Which, the Budget Advisory Board?
Yes.
Yes.
And the next one is the Lady Board, one alternate member, term expiring two thousand and nine.
Yes, and that is, we have an application from Cheryl Haggerty, who has served before. I believe she's still here.
I make a motion, we accept her.
Second, Councilor Mason, got a second from Councilor Larrichelle. All those in favor?
Order passed five zero.
And I.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
I have a motion, and a second?
I second that.
And a second from Councilor Larrichelle. All those in favor? Order passed.